He's gonna pop in.
Yeah, I think she was saying. Probably come in rather than sticking around for the whole thing. A little bit.
Good.
So I figure if. Oh. Julia is here, I think is.
Was that what?
Hi to those of you joining us, we're obviously a couple of minutes early, so. Wait a little bit before we kick things off.
Good even lighting there Otis, I don't have good even lighting here.
Thanks for the for the longest time this lamp I'm using the. Light bulb died, so I just had that big overhead light you see behind me and it's terrible.
I do have a button up t-shirt on though.
There you go.
I have that going for me tonight.
Yeah, I should have thought to find something orange, I don't really match the color scheme here.
Yeah, I think we'll, I think we'll be alright.
Yeah. It's like we got. Decent number of people coming in, yeah. We're right at six, but give it a couple of minutes for people to show up a little late.
Let's give him a minute.
Yeah.
So you should be able to put that into a slideshow view also.
Yes, that's a good point.
Yeah, I was right now you have it in the you have the working pane there with the notes underneath.
Yeah. Is that showing up now?
Um. Yep, still there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I think if you go to slideshow.
Alright, yeah, let me try one again. Try all the different buttons you can press in PowerPoint to start a slideshow and see which one will work.
Go to the one right above the, if you see the button up, go directly above the word button up in the green and the in the red box there, it says slideshow go to your left, yeah, right there. And then go from beginning.
That do it?
No, it's so weird. Do you have two screens? Do you have two screens right now?
No, and it's showing up for me as as if I'm showing a slideshow, huh?
Really?
Yeah.
Maybe we should ask our audience what they see.
Yeah, that this is actually, here's a good, we can, we can test out everyone's knowledge of Zoom webinars, so the way this is set up. For those of you here.
Looks like Trish Desmond.
Do have a chat.
Yeah.
Not a slideshow, yes.
Hello Hannah, welcome.
Hi.
Anna.
Hi, nice to see you. We haven't met before, I believe.
No, I don't think so, yeah, just a million emails back and forth, but yeah. Uh, thank you Trish, by the way, in the in the chat, yeah, I guess maybe it's something to do with Zoom that doesn't seem to like cooperating with PowerPoint.
Yeah, go up to.
Presentation.
Otis, can you go to view there, so you have the slideshow at the toolbar there, yeah, go to view for me and then. Hit notes and just take turn the notes off, see, nope, to your right.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I just do that.
Yeah.
It's better at least, right?
Yeah, and I don't understand why you're not able to see this, I know that. One has been said it's an artifact of Zoom, but I've seen it function properly before. I'm not sure why it's doing that.
Huh. Yeah, I'm not sure, and then I think we can get this pane on the left to go away, right?
Oh, I see what Trish is saying, you see what Trish is saying, thank you Trish.
Yeah. Alright, I mean, yes, let's try, it wouldn't be. A Zoom webinar or remote, you know, virtual webinar if there weren't fun technical problems at the beginning. This is all part of it, so. Let me see here.
Well, usually Button Up Becca does a lot of this work, but tonight we all get Button Up Brad and he left us to Otis, so.
Right? Yeah, if no one, we can just, we can blame Becca, right? Um. Yeah, so. I have the PowerPoint itself selected. As the screen I'm sharing.
Let's give it another minute to try Otis, and if not, I think we'll probably get started and.
Yeah.
To deal with the teaser slides there, oh, look at that.
I can make those go away at least, hopefully.
There you go.
It's a little better.
Thank you again, Trish. Slide is bigger, good. Yeah, your your screen doesn't, can you, if you hit the full size, does that make that any larger there or no?
Oh, is that down fit slide? No, doesn't seem like it, I can try zooming in a little, but.
Yeah, okay. I guess that's the best we're gonna do tonight, folks. Will you stay with us?
Right, hopefully this isn't, this won't scare you away, I promise, we are confident at something.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're about 6:05, so I guess we we may as well. Get going, but I, Trish at least has discovered the chat thankfully, but for the rest, anyone who hasn't, that should be along. Along the bottom of your screen. There's also a Q and A option. If you want to ask a question, I can see, I'll be able to see those, well, all three of us who are presenters will be able to see those and we can answer them. Because this is a webinar. Oh, Trish, testing out the QA for us too, it looks like it works, I see that, thank you. They, if you want to speak, just let me know and I have to actually. Sort of give you permission to talk, because it's a webinar as opposed to a meeting, sort of. How this is set up. So feel free to ask any, if you don't, well, if you can't find the chat, you can't ask the questions about it, but hopefully. Hopefully you all are familiar with these by this point. So I'll get started with the the actual presentation, the reason we're here, so. As we've mentioned before, we've got Brad Long from Efficiency Vermont and Anna Mahia from Vital Communities. Brad's gonna be giving the step up to Button Up part of the the presentation, sort of a. Overview of the Button Up. Program and incentives and things like that that are available to you. He'll also, there's a section on an introduction to heat pumps, that will be part of this, he'll be he'll be doing. I'm Otis Monroe, I'm over at the soon to be Mount Ascotney Regional Commission, there's our old logo there at the bottom, but. Starting January 1st, you won't be able to find us at Southern Windsor County anymore. And we do a whole bunch of things, but one of those is. This kind of stuff, so. It's good to see so many people here and I'll get pass it off to Brad.
Yeah, thank you Otis, and thank you everybody for coming tonight and for your interest in Button Up Vermont. It's really cool to see a good turnout and to have people beginning to think about their homes and and kind of buttoning up their homes and their properties. It's a it's a great opportunity for everybody and it's great to see the participation, so thank you for coming out. And I do want to thank our host, the the Mount Ascotney Regional Planning Commission. And our local partner Anna Mahia of Vital Communities who are joining us tonight. Otis, thank you for the introduction, thanks for getting this organized and getting the the advertisements out there in the community. I should also just thank Front Porch Forum, it, Front Porch Forum has been a community partner for Button Up. They helped us get the word out about these presentations and the entire Button Up Vermont program this year, so. Kind of a grassroots approach in a in a digital landscape anymore today. Our partner Front Porch Forum has been really kind of vital. I assume everybody can hear me, can everybody see the slides, and I think we've. We've been through that already. I think we're good there. So I I'd like to kind of open with a a quick question here. How many folks have taken some type of. Have taken some type of efficiency improvement on their home, how many people have done some kind of improvement in their home? I'm gonna pretend for a minute that I see hands raised and people out there in the audience like it was in the old days where. We'd show up at a place and there'd be like food and beverages out and people talking and. Oh, it looks like a lot of you have have started to work on your homes, that's really great. I think that's awesome. I imagine that there might be some more ways that we can help make your home a little bit more comfortable, save money and fuel, and a lot of, a lot of this tonight is about. Helping people find those paths, so it's great to see that everybody is already working in those arenas. Overall, our goal for you this evening is that we hope to provide you with some. Like basic knowledge and background resources to help you get started and to know where to turn for more help. So without that, with with that said, Otis, would you mind going to slide number two for me, please? Alright. So stepping up to to Button Up our quick agenda here. Stepping up to Button Up, that's the the portion of the program that. I'll run here, talks a little about the Button Up program, introduction to heat pumps. That is, there's a focus that we're gonna offer tonight, just a little bit about the heat pump technology specifically and how it can best be used in somebody's home. And then we're gonna hand it off to Anna Mahia here at Vital Communities, she's gonna talk about an energy savings project. So that's our agenda for this evening. And Otis, if you could move us to slide three, please. Okay. Stepping up to Button Up, so I'm gonna get into the Button Up campaign here, and before I do that, I want to mention a couple of sponsors, Otis, could you move us to slide four, please? So Button Up Vermont is is a statewide effort, it's brought to you by. A number of different partnerships throughout the state, and you can see here we have. B Cam, which is. A a community based organization, we have BEEP, educational based organization, we have. Efficiency Vermont, obviously, Vermont Natural Resources Council, V N R C. We have Capstone, we have Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. We have partnerships with regional planning commissions, Vermont Council on Rural Development. And the Energy Action Network, and Otis, if you can move us to slide five. And chat real quick about that as well. These are the other, the other side of the partnership range here, this is your your electric utilities. And your your gas utility in the state, depending upon where you live, you may be served by Vermont Gas. Now, most of the state is not, most of us are on unregulated fuels, but we have. Partnerships with other utilities, Green Mountain Power, Stow Electric, Burlington Electric. Vipsa, Washington Electric Co-op, the Vermont Electric Co-op, so. The point of this is that this is not a a single effort by a single organization, this has been brought to you by a number of. Regional and local organizations that are out there to. Help folks become educated and find the resources necessary to make themselves more comfortable, save some energy and and and. Kind of do the right thing for the planet. So if you wouldn't mind us, Otis, move us to slide six, please. So. So. What what are we gonna learn today, what is buttoning up? Essentially, what what I like to do here is. Note this, about a 20, maybe a 30 minute presentation, we're gonna have lots of time at the end for questions and discussion. I attended a Button Up event today, our weatherization Wednesdays, I don't know if anybody else has been attending them, but. We had about 20 to 30 minutes worth of questions in the end and really made for some great conversation, so. If you have questions, it'd be awesome, you can pop them in there and unless it's a. A an urgent burning question, we'll hold them to the end. And and Otis can help us with those questions a little bit, a little bit later. And in terms of taking notes, you'll be provided a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, so you don't need to to worry about taking notes too much. But you can add any notes to it at any point in time in arrears. So what is buttoning up, why Button Up Vermont, how to get started? We're gonna talk about income eligibility, comprehensive weatherization and do it yourself weatherization. And then, like I said, we'll have this time for the question and discussion. So Otis, if you don't mind, the number seven. So. What is buttoning up? In in the most simple terms, buttoning up is preventing heat loss essentially. In a home, in a building, in a structure, so when we're talking about buttoning up, we're talking about insulating. And air sealing, okay, they're two different things, they're two different pieces. So insulation is what most people think about when they talk about. Buttoning up their home or tightening their home or trying to make some kind of. Energy improvement in their home, a lot of people think, well, I'm gonna get some of that pink insulation. And I'm gonna roll it up in the attic here and we're gonna be great, we're gonna add two feet of it, it's gonna be the best ever. And it's, it kind of doesn't work that way, because if you think about wearing a sweater. On a January day when the wind is blowing. The wind cuts right through that sweater and you lose all of the insulating characteristic that the sweater might offer you. And that's really what insulation is up in your attic, it's a, it's a really fantastic air filter. And what I mean by that is, as warm air is rising through your house, it rises and passes right through the insulation. So the heat that you're creating in your house will rise and pass right through the insulation, so just insulating a house is not gonna, it's not gonna. It's not gonna get you where you want to be, we have to add the air sealing. The air sealing is removing those holes and it's preventing cold air from getting in. And hot air from getting out, so if we think about going outside here in January or even the last two days, I don't know if anybody spent any time outside, but. I literally thought yesterday or two days ago, was it November 2nd or the second week of December, it was just howling out there, but. I've remembered quite quickly that I had to have layers on and I had to have an insulating layer and a wind blocking layer. And your house is really the same way, when you combine insulation and air sealing, you will have a much tighter. Much more weather resistant home and it becomes. Almost incredibly immediately more efficient. So Otis, if you can move us to slide eight, we'll talk a little bit about. Kind of air leaks, you know, this is, this is more about what is buttoning up, so warm air and cool air. And you can see in the picture here, cool air is coming in from the the basement of the house. And it's moving up through the house and it's escaping through the top areas here. And this is, this is really what we call convection, this is, this is a normal. A normal happening where where heat is warming up in the house and it's rising and it's going through the house. The 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 part that a lot of people don't recognize sometimes is when we talk about weatherizing a house, we. We really encourage people to look at the basement, and if you had to choose two projects in one year. Or one project over the course of two years, start with the basement first. The cold air in your house is coming in at the lowest levels typically. Unless there's a shortcut like an open window on a middle level, most of the air that's coming into your home that's cold is gonna come in through the bottom. And as it warms up in your house, it rises and it it makes an escape out through the top of the house. So when we insulate and air seal a basement, we help stop some of that convective nature, and then when we. Insulate and air seal an attic above it, we stop all that heat heat and air loss moving through the the building, but. There's some areas of the home that are pretty common for leakage and that can be like a fan vent, that's a bathroom or a kitchen or a dryer. Attic catches are particularly leaky and uninsulated spaces, how many of us in our homes have the attic hatch where it's nothing more than just a wooden board? There's nothing there, it's like a big, big hole for warm air to to rise up through. The chimney in your house, if it's not closed, if the damper's not closed, that's definitely a place where you're gonna see some air moving up through it. Reced lighting. I went into a person's home recently where this was, well, recently, I mean, my last winter, went into their home and they had just re. They had remodeled their entire kind of downstairs, there are a whole bunch of recessed lighting in there. And they had called us out because they had seen one of our advertisements about icicles on their house and they said. We've never had so many icicles on our house, and what it was, was the recessed lighting. Hadn't been sealed properly, so all the heat was just going up through the recessed lighting holes and. Going right out. Right out the roof. But power outlets, doors and windows, and then basements where the basement connects to the first floor, that tends to be a pretty leaky spot. So that's kind of how the air gain and and how it moves its way through, Otis, if you can move us to number nine. So when we. Looks like we're, you're on number eight, can you go one more for me? Yep, there we go, thank you, so. So why insulation? So essentially, that that sweater that we talked about before should always be in contact with the windbreaker, so you want to prioritize insulation in all of the places with the most common leaks. So in terms of a a place with common leaks, the 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 number one we see typically in a home is in the attic, that's where most leaking occurs. It's it tends to be where. There's there's not as much insulation, there's not as much finished work up there like drywall, so a lot of air can move through that space. The ceiling in a home tends to be the the next place where we see a lot of air leaking. Number three is the rim joists, that's where your. Kind of where your basement wall, your your basement wall is meeting the wooden part of your home, that whole band that goes around your house is the. The the rim joist, and that tends to be a pretty leaky spot, not only is it leaky, but they tend to be uninsulated, in my house. It was four inches of wood and that was it, in some places, they're just concrete. And and they're really very, very low insulating value whatsoever. The basement wall is also a spot that is tends to be a pretty leaky spot, we don't think about it because we don't think of airflow moving through, but. Airflow does move through a wall, and so there's moisture. And then the foundation itself. So those are all spots where we see air and moisture. Moving into a home and up and then through and out of a home, those are the most popular areas where we typically focus on when we say let's let's button things up. So. We beg the question. Why should we button up, Otis, if you can move us to slide 10, please? Yeah, so why should we button up? Couple of major points here, saving money, you know, a comprehensive weatherization project can save Vermont households. Being $500 to $800 a year on fuel costs. Historically, households have saved about 15% after a project is completed. I did my house last year, my calculation comes in about 21 to 22%. But I'm gonna see because I I did it in December, so I have to kind of wait through the year to to close out, but that's my prediction. It saves money for Vermont, when we spend money on fossil fuels for heating, 78% of that money leaves the state. So saving money for you also means that you're saving money for the Vermont economy. Weatherizing and buttoning up also increases comfort. You you certainly don't need, I don't need to tell you that to be more comfortable, if you put a sweater and a windbreaker before you go outside in January, the same is true for your home. It also makes your home a lot cooler in the summer months, and I can attest to that, I had a lot of neighbors who complained it was a really hot year. I didn't think it was that hot and I I couldn't understand why, but I think after, you know, the insulating I did and the air sealing, I think I get it a little bit more. The weatherization also improves the air quality in your home. For folks with some respiratory challenges, asthma and some other. You know, allergy, allergen related respiratory challenges, particularly with molds, mildews and 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 moist places like that. Rectifying those situations by weatherizing a basement will greatly improve the indoor air quality of the home. My home used to have kind of a bit of a musty smell to it, I have a dirt floor crawl space. With a a concrete wall foundation around it. And once I sealed up that floor and those walls, my house immediately changed, it went from kind of a campy. Kind of a campy smell to like more of a house, I can't describe it any other way than that, so. Indoor health can also be dramatically improved with weatherization, it would certainly save energy. You know, we like to say you shouldn't pay to heat the air around your house, because that's a waste of money, it's a waste of fuel. Right now, in Vermont, heating our homes and businesses makes up about 42% of our total energy use in the state. And 78% of our homes are using fossil fuels for heating, buttoning up our homes could reduce that. Energy usage considerably. And then reducing carbon pollution, right along with saving energy is reducing carbon pollution. The less fuel we burn, the fewer pollutants end up in our atmosphere contributing to climate change. As of 2015, which is the latest year for which we have data, 28% of Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions come from heating buildings. The second largest sector behind transportation. So where we spend a lot of our time in our homes. Lot of opportunity for us to to button them up and and save some energy and 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 save some money and become a lot more comfortable. So Otis, if you can move us to slide 11, that'd be awesome. Okay, so why should we button up? Sorry. To 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 meet our emissions targets, we basically need to weatherize just about every building in the state, here's a fun fact, Vermont has the second oldest housing stock in the nation. If you want to guess who is the first oldest housing stock in the nation, go ahead and put it in the chat and we'll see who wins. End of the presentation here. If you move us to slide 12, Otis. So I want to talk a little bit about how to get started with this. There's a number of paths that you can can take to complete your weatherization project, before I get too far into this, I just want to say my weatherization project took me two years. I pieced this out, I did some of it myself, I hired a a E P I certified contractor to do some of it. So it was a combination of things that that happened in my house, but it took about two years to do the job, it's a big job sometimes, weatherizing a house is not like. A specific room, it it's the whole house, you're dealing with a whole house, so it can be a little bit invasive and it can be time consuming. But there's a number of ways to get started, in terms of like income eligible. Eligibility, if your income falls at or below 80% of the state's median income, you're eligible for free weatherization. You can certainly speak with Efficiency Vermont about like qualifying to see if you might be qualified for that, but again. If your income falls at or below 80% of the median income, you're eligible for free weatherization on your home. Terms of comprehensive weatherization, this is your best bang for your buck. This is what I did in my house, I had I had this done by a, I worked through one of our E E N. Home performance with Energy Star qualified contractors and we we, he did most of the work, but I did some of the work myself, but. That is a comprehensive weatherization project for your home, it takes into account everything, for me, the contractor gave me options to choose from. You know, I was able to kind of choose how far I wanted to go with certain things. And it helped me, helped me customize this for my own personal budget. The do it yourself model is is for the handy Vermonters amongst us. And there are some parts of weatherizing that you can do yourself, and Efficiency Vermont has a $100 rebate available to cover the cost of some of those materials. And one thing I'll say here is that, again, sometimes it's just not possible to complete a comprehensive project at once. Reach out to your contractor, learn about ways to split the project into multiple phases to reduce that upfront cost. And you know, we can also help break the upfront cost and easy monthly payments, our customer support team can talk to you about some financing options, which I think we'll probably chat about here in a slide or two. Otis, am I moving us to slide 13? So. So if you think you have a a comprehensive weatherization project that might be right, there's a number of ways to move forward. And we have weatherization assistance program, so this eligibility is based on income and is determined by your regional weatherization agency. If you are living in in in. Yes. Can't remember the name of the county, it's Windsor or Wyndham right now, I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's alright, Windsor.
Windsor, yeah. Windsor County, so your your regional agency, you should be able to see on the map here. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's a, it's, is it Sevka on that side of the state?
Yep, that's right.
Good, I win, I got one, my geography class. So Sevka is the Weatherization Agency for Income Eligible Vermonters, you can contact us or you can contact. Sevka directly if you think you may be income eligible. That's certainly a way to do it, and then the other model is for folks that are not income eligible, if you can move to slide 14 for me, Otis. Yep, there you go, so this is, this is no interest financing, so if you're, if you're worried about the upfront cost of the. Cost of this, there are some very low interest and low interest financing options available to pay for the project. First, for for some of the households that qualify for modern income incentives, you may have access to no interest financing. So between the incentives and the financings, you could pay for a comprehensive project for about $60 a month. Do it yourself projects are not eligible for the home energy loan. I will say that my project has cost me $51 a month, I chose it over a five year note. And. It's it's essentially working out to me, for me to be just about a cost cash flow positive. Meaning that the the money I'm paying, the $50 a month is approximately the money I'm saving on fuel. So for me, it works out that I'm just kind of paying my normal fuel bills for five years and then after five years I see the savings. But we are offering the home energy loan through a number of participating vendors, V S E C U, Opportunities Credit Unit and Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. You you can, you can borrow up to $40,000 for a project and there is no minimum loan amount. And you can weatherize, you can buy mechanical things like heat pumps and water heaters and wood heating systems and other efficient appliances. So you can bundle. A modernization of some of your mechanical equipment or some of your appliances with weatherization all in one loan, it's pretty painless, it's one, one sheet of paper to fill it out. I did it through V S E C U, they were super helpful, it worked really well, I was really pleased with the process and. I certainly will not have been able to weatherize my house without that opportunity, so. Between the incentives and and the the financing available, like I say. I I I went with financing, it's $51 a month for five years, I think that's pretty fair for the increased comfort I have in my house, let alone the energy savings, so. Otis, if you can move us to slide 15. Just want to chat real quick here about the do it yourself incentive. So Efficiency Vermont, if you provide us. Um, so efficiency Vermont, if you provide us a receipt for, uh, purchasing of supplies for three of these projects, we'll, we'll, we'll provide you with a one hundred dollar check. Uh, you can build or purchase an airtight insulated attic hatch. This is a great do it yourself project. I've done this before myself or other people. Super easy, doesn't take long, maybe twenty minutes and it will make a big difference how much heat is going up through your attic. It's amazing. Uh, you can air seal and inside the box sill and rim joints in your basement. Couple of different ways you can do that. You can build an airtight well inside bulkhead door in your basement. Uh, a couple of different ways you can do that. You can install a new window, a low e-storm window or a panel. You can simply weatherize your windows or weatherize your exterior doors. Uh, and the other thing I'll mention is that, you know, we have this information on efficiencyvermont.com. We have a lot of, uh. Videos, how-to videos about how to, to weatherize like a basement door and how the weather isn't attic hatch. Super handy, easy stuff to, to use and, and utilize. Uh, it's on a YouTube channel, but we link it back to our website. So maybe we're checking out if you're, if you're curious about any of that. Otis, if you can move us to slide sixteen, please? So, uh, next step here. So there's a lot of ways to move forward if you're ready to step up. Um, the summary of those next steps you can take depending upon your level of interest and eligibility for different programs. Um, you know, I, I, I always tell people. Reach out to customer supported efficiency Vermont. Um, we can start by helping you by reviewing your, your, uh, energy bill over the telephone. If you'd like to go a little bit further with that, we have a virtual home energy visit. It's free. Uh, that's where utilizing your smartphone or, uh, a tablet. You walk through the house and you show one of our engineers what's in the house and the engineer helps guide that conversation. Uh, and ends up being a very, um. Very easy way that, uh, to, to get a lot of great information. And what I find most people tell us is that it helps them prioritize where to start, how to get going. Um, so that's a way you can do that. You can use our find a contractor page to connect with a local contractor. And again, you can call your local community action agency, um, Sevka. Right? So. Slide seventeen here, Otis. We're going to talk about. Heat pumps. Thank you, Otis. Um. So heat pumps, this was the, uh, the focus. I think everybody's probably heard about heat pumps already this year. If you haven't heard about heat pumps. Um, it's a, uh, it's, it's an electric heating, cooling and dehumidification technology. Um, the heat pump that you all already have in your home, whether you know it or not, is your refrigerator. It's a heat pump. If you put your hands on the back of your refrigerator, up near the top of it, you're going to feel heat escaping. If you open the door and put your hand inside of it, it's going to be cold. The reason is, is that the refrigerant in that, in that refrigerator, similar to the refrigerant in a heat pump. Um, boils at a very low temperature. And, uh, when that occurs, uh, it, it absorbs heat. And, um, and the refrigerator model is pulling heat out of that inside space there and, uh, and it's pushing it out to the back. Um, the heat pump kind of works the same way. We're going to chat a little bit about that. And I'm not like the technical expert on this, so bear with me. And Otis and I have to manage an animated slide here together. So. Uh, Otis, let's go to slide eighteen. We can probably, uh, move beyond slide eighteen and. Get right into slide nineteen. Now this is really going to be a lot of fun. So Otis is going to try to. To manage this one while I, while I chat along here. Um.
I just realized since we didn't get the presentation to work, we don't get to see the, the fun animations.
You know what? I'm just seeing that now too. Okay. Well, then I'm just going to walk everybody through this then. Okay?
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, so there's, there's, the thing of the heat pump, there's two units in the heat pump. A unit is placed within the heat source. Okay. That's wherever you're pulling heat from. And a unit is placed within the heat sink. That's wherever you're trying to heat. Okay. The evaporator pulls heat molecules in. All right. We see the evaporate on the left-hand side of this image here. So that evaporator is pulling heat molecules in. The air runs through a refrigerant. The cold molecules are released and the warmer molecules are pushed through a compressor. Which increases the temperature and the pressure of that refrigerant. Okay. So it's making its way across the top there. Uh, the indoor unit releases the heat and sends the refrigerant back outside to repeat the process. It's essentially the reverse of how a window air conditioner or refrigerator works. The way, what makes it really kind of amazing is how efficient it is. On average, for every one kilowatt hour of electricity you pay for. You get the equivalent of three kilowatt hour of heat output to your home, depending upon outside temperatures. When outside temperature drops. You get less than that equivalent of three kilowatt hour. Uh, you get closer to half, maybe one if it's really, really cold outside. New heat pump technologies, specifically the refrigerant technology inside of it. Is making heat pumps function really well in really cold environments. That really wasn't the case ten years ago. Um. So the reason that these things are so efficient is because actually they're just moving heat. They're not generating heat. They're just moving it. Um, and the really cool thing about a heat pump, if you've got one, if you've used one. You probably notice that when it gets hot and muggy outside. You can flip that temperature down to a comfortable setting and voila, air conditioning comes out of this thing now. So what was making you warm in the sun, in, in the wintertime is now cooling you off. In the summertime and it's dehumidifying the space. It's one appliance in your house that heats and cools. It's kind of magical. It's kind of cool. Um. I, I know the first time I witnessed a heat pump, I thought. Why is this thing making air conditioning? It must be broken and I didn't realize that they work this way. So that was my ignorance. Hopefully I will save you from that. Uh, that, that, that public situation that I had to endure in front of my colleagues at efficiency Vermont who are all real tech nerdy. So, uh, anyway. So, uh, it, I want to talk a little bit about some of the different types of heat pumps. Otis, if you, it's a slide twenty, please? So this is what we call a ductless heat pump. Okay. This is the most common option for your home. Uh, in this case, the heat sink is a room inside your home. Remember that's where, that's where it's going to go. The heat is going to go. And the heat source is the outside air, which is why these are sometimes called. Air source heat pumps, meaning that they're getting their heat directly from the outside air. The name ductless heat pumps indicates that they are a point of source, uh, or a space heater. They heat your home directly from the indoor unit rather than through ducts or radiators. We're going to talk about them in just a moment. Um, these do work on even the coldest, uh, Vermont winter days. Modern systems are rated down to twenty degrees Fahrenheit below zero. Their efficiency does decrease on the coldest days, so we still recommend a backup system to ensure that you're not without heat. All right? Slide twenty-one, Otis? Um. So. Oh, this is just mentioned that's cooling. So sorry. Even though I was looking at, I think this is kind of look like the same slide. Uh, even though these are called heat pumps, they can, uh, help you on the summertime too. The process reverses by pulling the hot air out of your home, providing efficient air conditioning and dehumidification. The efficiency is even higher in the summer than it is in the winter, again, because it's moving air molecules around and generating cold air molecules. So. Uh, a window unit air conditioner consumes about twice as much electricity as a heat pump when used for air conditioning purposes. So, um, if you have a bunch of window unit air conditioners, if you use them a lot. Uh, and you're looking to change the way you heat a little bit, a heat pump might be a really great option for you to consider. Otis, if you can move us to slide twenty-two? So a ducted heat pump, uh, perhaps you'd rather explore a whole house solution rather than a point source option. Uh, these are also eligible for efficiency Vermont rebates. So rather than being a point of source, uh, space heater, the whole home heat pump. Gives you the option of distributing the heat throughout your house, possibly in a, in an existing heating distribution system. So if you've got duct work in your home for a furnace, let's say. You can use a ducted heat pump to do that work in your home versus using a furnace to do the work. You can also use those same ducts for air conditioning in the summertime. Um, so first, a, essentially, uh, ducted heat pump still work for your cold climate air to air heat pump. But rather than using heating, a, a room, the hot air flows through a directed distribution system and out through vents in your home. Um, and like I said, an option also provides you with air conditioning in the summer. So. For all you folks out there without boilers, but with furnaces. If you want to switch over to heat pump, you have that option as well. Next slide for us, Otis? So air to water heat pumps, um. Let's see here. So. Air to water heat pump, uh, a little different. So this is, this is for the folks that have more of a traditional boiler heating system, baseboard heating or floor heating. Um, an air to water heat pump would use outside air to heat water. Okay. The hot water would flow through radiators or radiant floor heating. In this scenario, you can use the same system to heat your household for hot water, for showers and cleaning. It's important to know these systems will not work in all homes. Air to water systems typically have to be designed into a home from the start. Even if you already have a hot water heating distribution system in your home. The heat pump technology does require some unique solutions. It would be difficult, but not impossible to retrofit most existing homes to accommodate an air to water heat pump distribution system. So if you've got the boiler, uh, hot water boiler and you're thinking. I'd rather do this with a heat pump. It can be. But from a retrofit standpoint. Uh, it's going to be costly. Um, it's better from a new construction or an addition type standpoint. Just wanted to mention so, so everybody knew that option was out there. Uh, slide twenty-four for us, Otis? Thank you. Uh, so how could a heat pump help you? Um, this was another animated slide, which we won't see the animations for, but that's okay. You can see all of them now at once. This is the bonus edition, everybody. Um, so how could a heat, heat pump help you? Could certainly save energy and reduce carbon pollution. We talked about that. Heat pumps are highly efficient. Okay. You may not be able to replace your entire home heating system. Uh, but you can turn it down. So it's just your backup. Um, you can save money depending upon your existing fuel source. If you have baseboard electric or typically more expensive heating fuel like propane or oil. The savings can be significant. However, if you're switching from natural gas or wood, a heat pump may not lower your heating bills. Something to keep in mind. Certainly you'll feel more comfortable. Heat pumps provide, uh, immediate comfort. Steady source of heat throughout the winter, um, and they work really well. Uh, in the summertime too, they work best if you just kind of set it and forget it. I want my temperature to be seventy degrees year round. It's kind of like the automatic air conditioning in your vehicle, the automatic HVAC controls in your vehicle. You set it at seventy and in the ideal world, every time you get in the car or in your house, it's seventy degrees. Same, same basic concept here. In, uh, slide twenty-five for us, Otis? So I want to mention the reason, uh, that, that heat pumps and mechanical technologies are often paired in conversation with weatherization. Okay. So. Um. You know, sometimes folks will take out their, their, their fossil fuel heating system. They'll throw a couple of heat pumps in and after a year of analysis. They come back and say, well, it's costing me more money to heat my house now than it was before. And I like to think that if we've got a garden shed out back and we're heating it with a little, little, like a Renai heater or something. And we swap that out with a heat pump. Yeah, I would imagine that heat pump is going to run a lot too because it's still a garden shed. Same kind of goes for a house. If your house is well insulated and air sealed. You're going to find the heat pump is going to work most effectively. It absolutely will. Um, so my recommendation. Uh, if you've got an aging heating system in your home that you think about replacing. And you've got budget for that this year, or you've got budget to weatherize, but the heating system has got another couple of years in it, I'd recommend you weatherize first. Okay? Um, you can do the mechanics later, the mechanical pieces later. But that weatherization of the home will provide you immediate, um, immediate comfort, immediate savings, uh, and immediate indoor air quality improvement. Um, in simply replacing the mechanical system won't do all three. It won't do that. Um, and, um. So, um. That, that's kind of, that's kind of it when we talk about considering a heat pump. Um, other than a, a single zone or a multi-zone. So a single zone heat pump, meaning one outdoor unit per one indoor unit. Um, are more efficient and cost effective. If that works for your home, consider a, a single, a single zone heat pump. Um, so those are some options. That's, that's kind of like the high level on heat pumps. And, um, I, I think we're ready to move to the, the next section here. Um, if you can move us to slide number twenty-six, Otis? So, um. I, I probably can, can hand this over to you, Otis, at this point in time. Uh, I've talked about button, stepping up to button up. And an introduction to heat pumps and I think we're going to turn it over to, uh, Anna Mahia, Anna Mahia, Mahia, Mahia. I, I'm so sorry. I messed this up. Mahia, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Otis, you, you want to take this over here? Help me out here?
Sure. I was going to say. We, uh, we do have a question about heat pumps. I don't know if we want to address that now, uh, right when we're done with that or save that all to the end.
I, I'm happy to. If we only have one, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah. We just had one come in so far. So, uh, Trish is saying that, um. They have a, a propane fueled boiler with the baseboard. Um, I heard you say retrofitting it for heat, for a heat pump is hard. Can I add a heat pump independently, not retrofit the boiler, but add the heat pump?
Yeah, yeah, you absolutely could. And that would be one of those ductless heat pumps. It was one of the first ones that we presented on there. Um, that would be kind of a through the wall heat pump that would go into a certain section of the home. So in that model, um. You'd have a heat pump in a, in a certain section of the home. Maybe you put two heat pumps, but. That's actually a good model. It's one of the ones that we recommend because you can have the heat pumps to do heating and cooling. Um, and you'll, you'll reduce your fossil fuel use because you won't have to run your boiler nearly as much.
Trish says awesome. So it seems like good answer to the question.
Cool.
Uh. And then, yeah, unless there, I guess we'll, you know, I'll keep an eye on the questions and we have time at the end in case more come through. Uh, but for now we'll move on to, to Anna, who's going to talk about, um. Her project over at Vital Communities working with, um, manufactured homes. So. Uh, Anna, I think you should be able to share your screen if you'd like to do that. I may have to stop first.
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right. Can everybody see my screen?
Showing up for me at least.
Awesome. So my name is Anna Mahia. Uh, I'm the climate projects coordinator at Vital Communities. And you'll see I also added the name here, Julia Guy. She's our AmeriCorps Vista member who's serving to help us launch this energy savings project. Next slide. So just a little bit of overview of a project. It is a three-year project that Vital Communities is engaged in. And it's got two main aspects. The first one is to test energy efficiency strategies for manufactured homes. That will reduce people's energy burden. And the second is to, um, test outreach strategies. And so the first aspect of energy efficiency strategies, we're working with a few community partners, including Cover Home Repair, which I know doesn't do much work in the southern. Um, part of Windsor County, um, but they, they do do much more work in, on the northern side, um, and also on the New Hampshire side. So they're our local partner and, uh, we're working with them to, um, figure out ways to weatherize manufactured homes. Um, and testing them to see how, how much savings will that. Um, will that pass on to the residents and can that then be. Scaled up so that maybe the cap agencies or maybe that's something that, um, contractors could add into their tool belt when they are weatherizing manufactured homes. Um, and the second part, which is a focus of today's conversation is testing the outreach strategies to reduce energy burden. So we're partnering with town energy committees, um, although they're not the only ones that we, um, are working with. We also. Have some more loose volunteer groups and, um, a partner Sustainable Woodstock, which is more formal than, um. A volunteer town energy committee. Um, but that's just to say that we, if there's just like a, a dedicated group of volunteers who want to do this. We'd be happy to work with you, even if that's outside of a energy committee. So, um, we're working with them to connect residents of those towns with immediate and long-term solutions to reduce their energy expenses. And we know that weatherization is one of them. Um, but we are also looking at other types of solutions. And so you might ask yourself, why are we focusing on manufactured homes? Um, and the reason is we recognize it is a significant portion of the housing stock here in Vermont. It is seven percent. And it's also an important source of affordable housing for our region, especially for rural regions. Um, and the older manufactured homes tend to be less energy efficient. So there's a lot of benefits that. Um, these residents can get in terms of savings, um, if, if we're able to implement some long and short-term solutions. Um, we also know that there's a higher energy burden for, um. Or homes that have like less, less insulation. So. Um, and we also know that manufactured homes are an underserved population when it comes to many of these programs like, um. Um. Like the home performance of Energy Star rebates. Um, so we're trying to see how can we, um. How can we promote some of these programs that people can then take advantage of? And it's also a very specific population. So if we're trying to test things, it's easy, um, to then. It's easy to try to stick, scale it down. And so working in, uh, mobile home parks, it's a lot easier to do some of the outreach work. Um, or at least it would be pre-COVID because we were testing a lot of door knocking, um. And actually now we're shifting to more virtual means. Um, so our two project goals are one to reduce energy burden. We don't think that people should have to worry about how they're going to heat their homes during the winter, especially right now with many people who are out of work or. Um, out of school and they're forced to spend more time at home during the winter. So their energy bills are increasing. Um, and especially people who are out of work, they, um, they don't have money to, they might not have the money to pay for those energy bills. Um. So we're trying to connect them with the programs that are already existing. And then also to connect with people who are experiencing high energy burden to figure out. What are the challenges that they're facing? What are solutions that they've, um, discovered themselves? And people who may have already taken advantage of some of these programs like, uh, the weatherization assistance program. Um, what feedback would they have to give to people who administer these programs? Um, what feedback would they have to give to people who administer these programs? Was it a straightforward application process? What barriers did they face so that, um, we can turn that feedback to the program administrators and see how we can improve them? Um, so our approach with this project is when we work with volunteer teams, we help them build an outreach team. Um, sometimes it's not the whole energy committee who will jump on this. Sometimes it's just, you know, two or three people from the energy committee who will dedicate, um, or commit their time to, to do this outreach. Um, second step, once they've got their outreach team is to get trained on the different energy programs that are out there. So similar to how Brad just talked about the, um, State Weatherization Assistance Program, the, um, the Home Performance with Energy Star rebates, we go over a bunch of other different programs that are available, um, including through local agencies like, um, um, like Covers, Weatherization Assistance Program. Um, Nonprofit Listen has a Heating Helpers. They go over, um, the state's fuel assistance programs and, um, crisis fuel assistance through the community action agencies. And so we're able to train volunteers on what's available and how do you help people, how do you, um, help residents navigate, um, what's out there and what might be best suited to their needs. Once they're trained on those programs, then we help develop an outreach plan. How are you now going to get the message out to people? And as I said, it's a lot difficult now because of COVID. So we're doing, we're relying on a lot more virtual means. Um, and that includes a lot of direct mail. So that's has been our, um, main strategy. And so we're come, coming up with, um, mailings that will get people's attention and provide that resources, that information about how to access these programs, um, how to contact the energy committee and, um, what, and to identify what programs they might be interested in so that people from the energy committee can call them and, um, share that information. And they can then, if, if, um, they did go ahead and apply for something like Covers home repair program, they can then follow up and say, yeah, I got the service that I need. Here's what my experience was. Um, so that's a little bit of our approach. And, um, this slide is just highlighting the towns who have been working with us. So as I said, it's a three-year project. Um, we're actually in year two right now. The first year we worked with the towns of Springfield and Hartford. Um, and then this year, this, um, fall winter, we're working with a few other towns, um, to do some outreach. Um, and that's all I have. That was a quick summary. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, um, answer those. I'm going to stop sharing my screens so we can talk to each other.
Uh, and we did have one question come in during that, uh, from Natalie asking when, so when you're talking about, um, manufactured homes, do you mean mobile homes or factory-built homes?
So we've been, um, so they're, they're kind of both, right? So mobile homes are also factory-built homes. We use that, um, we know that a lot of people, when we say manufactured home, I think they tend to think about like a Vermont. Um, and that's not necessarily what, what we're talking about. We're, um, focusing more on just, um, some of the manufactured homes that may be a little bit less energy efficient. So not, not modular, um, not necessarily modular homes. I hope that answers that question.
Okay, just a, a follow-up on that saying, my, also from Natalie, my factory-built home was supposed to be energy efficient. It's not a mobile home.
Yeah.
And, um, that's all I'm seeing right now. We, um, we're, we're getting near the end, but we'll also have, have time at the end for questions if people have, uh, have more that they come up with as we sort of wrap up. So I will just get back to the presentation we were looking at before to, to wrap this up. All right. So hopefully seeing where we left off on the button up presentation. And so just, uh, a lot of these we've shared already, some, some resources to be aware of in this part of the state. Uh, we obviously have, have vital communities here. That's an excellent, the energy page, there's a ton of stuff on there. If you're interested in doing your own work or just looking into weatherization projects, there's, there's just, that's a great place to start. Efficiency Vermont also, Brad shared that, that phone number. That's also a great place. Call someone up on the phone and they'll, they'll get you started. And you can go from there. That's what they're, they're designed to do. That's their main thing is, um, that customer service number is really, a really good resource. Then there's us. You'll notice this is, this is our old website, but it'll be Mark ET and then Energy. Um, we mostly support those town energy committees that Anna was talking about. Uh, we do have a couple of the resources on there. If your town is working on an update to their town plan, there's some energy sort of language that can go in there to poke the town into doing some work on their end. So there's some resources there. We have, uh, a few things that we've done for, uh, rental property owners, landlords and for renters. Uh, so there's sort of a list of resources out there. You can find that on our, our webpage if you're in either of those situations. Um, and then I also at the very end, just wanted to make sure to give a shout out to our, energy committees and coordinators who we work with. Um, we're sort of, as our old name suggests, the southern part of Windsor County, we're 10 towns sort of starting with Windsor, West Windsor and Reading, and then south to the, the end, to the Wyndham border. Uh, so of those towns, these are sort of the active energy committees who we're working with. They do a ton of great work. You've already heard, uh, Springfield has worked with Anna on the energy savings project. And it's not just energy. I know with the, uh, composting law that came into effect this summer, a lot of them were busy with that. Uh, lots of solar projects, renewable energy projects, community gardens. They're really, you know, they're doing so much good work and we're here to help them do that. Uh, and so if you don't see your, your town on this list, but you want to get involved, and do, you know, not do weatherization projects on your home, but then also in your wider community, uh, these kinds of projects, uh, please feel free to get in touch with me or us at the Regional Planning Commission. And that's one thing we're there for, um, is to help you start a committee. Or if you're in these towns and you're interested in joining a committee, they're always, you know, they're all a volunteer. So they're always looking for more help. Um, and if you're interested, please do get in touch with me and I can, I can put you in touch with the right people there. I think on that note, um, there's our questions pay, uh, slide. And we also do have, uh, I believe my contact information. If again, you're interested in any of those energy committees or starting your own. And then, uh, Becca White is at Efficiency Vermont, sort of the, the main button up person. So that's actually her contact information.
You can call her Button Up Becca if you get her on the phone.
That's true. That's right. And she is a, she is a, a great resource. Oh, and I do, I forgot. I didn't put it on the other page. Uh, the Button Up Vermont webpage is great. Um, Brad mentioned some of those do-it-yourself videos. I know one of, um, one of my coworkers is currently building his house in, in November. Uh, so he's having, you know, he's making great use of those videos. He's actually said how, how helpful is it be, have been as he's, you know, putting his windows on and in, in the freezing cold. Uh, and we just, our office is an old, in a very old house that we just purchased. And so we've actually been looking at these videos to do some weather stripping around the windows and doors. They've been a great resource for that. So I definitely, from personal experience, can tell you to check those out. Looks like we do have a question. So Susan is asking, uh, I have a leaky sliding door, um, an old heating system and an old oil hot water tank, a bulkhead that needs weatherization. Without income due to COVID, will SEVCA help, uh, with these sorts of things? And I don't know actually who, who feels, maybe everyone, but who wants to take that on first?
I mean, I, I will say that I would never want to speak on, on behalf of another agency, but my, my inclination for you would be to, to call SEVCA and have a conversation with them. Um, it sounds to me that from, uh, your, your noting of your mechanical equipment and some of the other, um, items in your home, that you have some, some need there, uh, to, to tighten that house up a little bit, make it a little more comfortable and to modernize some of the mechanical equipment and SEVCA certainly might be able to help you do that. If you are not able to, to find the help and assistance you need with SEVCA, I would encourage you to call us at Efficiency Vermont. And we'll see if there's some other ways that we can help you.
I don't have anything to add to that, Anna. Is that?
No, I think Brad, Brad covered it well.
All right. Thank you. That's a great question, Susan. And I'll give it a couple more minutes so far. Oh, there is actually, let me switch back over to the chat. We did have a few guesses come in on sort of what state is first with oldest towns in the, in the country.
I saw it in there. Okay. Let's see, did anybody guess? So we have New York, Maine, Massachusetts. It's Maine for the win, everybody. It's Maine for the win. They have the oldest, nor, northern New England has the oldest housing stock in our country. It's, it's the oldest stuff. I mean, when, when, when you see like a stacked field stone foundation, you're, 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 you're touching anywhere from about 1790 up until about, uh, you know, you're talking late, late 1880s, 1890s, um, when they started moving over to a more of a concrete base. So when you see these stacked stone foundations and these old tall windows and tall doors, this is stuff that you just, you really won't see as much of this throughout the rest of the country. Um, we have some really old housing stock here, some really, really old stuff. Me, it's really neat stuff. I love a, I love a field stone foundation, but, uh, it's one of those things where I look at it and I'm like, I'm fascinated that somebody built this 150 years ago and it's still here. But geez, I can feel the air moving through and there's water down there and there's, oh, there goes a mouse, you know, so it's, you know, if, if you, if you spray foam a, a, a wall that doesn't have water moving through it, it stops all the moisture, the rodents don't get through and the air stops as well. It's, it's, it's cool. But yeah, we have, we have the second oldest housing stock in the nation. Is that it? No more questions?
Yeah, everyone's being, uh, everyone's pretty quiet. It must've been, I think we did such a good job that no one has.
I don't know. I might've just mumbled on for too long.
Well, it looks like everyone stuck with it. So thank you all. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, Trish.
Yes, and thank you for all the, all the technical help and everything, Trish. Also, um, this, we are recording this and so that's another thing I guess to mention that are, it'll definitely be up on our website. Uh, I don't know if anywhere else, but if you know someone who's interested and couldn't make it or now that you've seen this and you know people who think they might, uh, get something out of it, uh, just head on over to our website and over the energy page, you know, give us some time to get it up there. But, uh, hopefully pretty soon you'll be able to find this there.
And I want to say thank you for everybody who attended. Um, thank you for the energy committees. I work with a lot of energy committees. And if there weren't energy committees throughout the state, I, I, a lot of people wouldn't be getting a lot of help. Energy committees are a critical part of this. So it's good work that folks are doing out there. Uh, Otis, thank you for, for hosting tonight. Anna, thank you for, for joining in and talking to us about what, what your organization is doing too. And I think that speaks to that collaborative effort that we have here in Vermont, where different agencies, local and regional are getting together to, to help educate people and, uh, help people become more comfortable and energy savvy and, um, use a little bit less energy. So thank you all for participating and helping out tonight. It was great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Brad and Anna both for, or I wouldn't, we wouldn't have been able to do this without you and it wouldn't have meant anything if no one had shown up to see it. So thank you everyone and not, not seeing anything else come through. I'll, uh, call it, uh, call it there. Everyone have a good night.
Yeah. Take care, everybody. Good night.